Solutions.
Correct. Marie, you want to do one through six?
Sure.
And I'll do seven through 12.
Okay.
I'll do the only ones for public safety.
That's fine.
Brent, who's on it? Timo?
Brent. No, oh, Brent, I think, right?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Brent, safety. And for public work, we've got 14 through 18. Tom, how do you want to do those?
Oh, well, I can do 14 and 15. Um, Grant, do you want to do 16? And 17 and 18?
Sure.
It doesn't matter, but if that.
Grant Olson's gonna do what, 16 through 18?
No, Grant will do 16 and Vicky can do 17 and 18.
Okay.
Ah. Unless you want to, man.
I, yeah, I have no problem. I'll do them all. Doesn't matter.
So who's, what do we got?
I'll do 16 through 18.
Okay.
Okay.
Screw me up.
I don't mind doing 18. I whatever.
Okay, we're good. We want to do one of them. Vicky, you want to do one?
Yeah, I'll do 18.
Come and get up real quick.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say someone's name. Whoever I call, you're gonna read it.
There you go. Pull the hat, pull the names out the hat.
There they go. All right, under new business, uh, number 19 would be.
I'll take it. Yep.
Okay, and then number 20, I believe we are pulling, correct, Eddie?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're not voting on that. And that would be it for resolutions. Okay, so I guess we're good. If you want to start the stream, then we'll get rolling here.
We already started. We're good to go.
We have letters to read in, right?
Yeah, we'll get to those. So we'll go in order. Um, so I'll call this meeting of the, uh, June 29th City Council Meeting Voting Session to order. The clerk, please call the roll.
Yeah, Councilman Sheldon? James?
Here.
Karuba?
Here.
Olson?
Right, is there?
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Nelson?
Here.
Eklund?
Here.
Graham Reinhardt?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
And Councilman Dolez?
Here. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 18th voting session, June 8th and June 15th special meetings?
So moved.
So moved by Councilwoman Eklund, right? Second there?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman James. Okay, there's no vote required. Do we have any messages from the mayor?
Yes, we do. Dear council members, on June 25th, 2020, and June 26th, 2020, I recognize my proclamation, the retirement of two City of Jamestown employees, Kevin P. Okerlund and Joseph A. Belito. Attached, please find the retirement proclamations honoring and congratulating our two retiring employees. In addition, on June 27th, 2020, I have appointed Matthew D. Coon to the position of Provisional Deputy Fire Chief of the City of the Jamestown Fire Department. Very truly yours, Edward A. Sungquist. And then I have two, two appointments to read into the record. Uh, council members, in pursuance of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Ryan A. Thompson, 232 Huxley Street, Jamestown, New York 14701, to be appointed City Controller in and for the City of Jamestown, New York, to fill the holdover term of Joseph Belito retired. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December 31st, 2023. Edward A. Sungquist, Mayor. And the second one is, council members, in accordance with Section 310 of the New York State Real Property Tax Law, I do hereby nominate Lisa M. Bulby, 418 Hazard Street, Jamestown, New York 14701, to be appointed as Assessor of the City of Jamestown, New York, to fill the unexpired term of Kevin Okerlund retired. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire September 30th, 2025. Edward A. Sungquist, Mayor.
And we have to vote on these, I assume? Do I have a motion to, uh, vote these two appointments in?
So moved.
So moved by Councilwoman Eklund and seconded by Councilwoman Olson. Will the clerk please pull the council on the appointments?
Um, is this the motion to suspend the rules and vote on the appointments? All right, thank you. Uh, Councilman Sheldon?
He's muted.
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman James?
Hi.
Karuba?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Eklund?
Hi.
Graham Reinhardt?
Hi.
Russell?
Hi.
And Dolez?
Hi. Now we'll vote on the two appointments. Do I have a motion, uh, to accept?
So moved by Councilwoman Karuba.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman, and by Councilwoman Eklund. Clerk, please pull the council on the appointments.
Councilman Sheldon? James?
Hi.
Karuba?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Eklund?
Hi.
Graham Reinhardt?
Hi.
Russell?
Hi.
And Dolez?
Congratulations to, uh, Ryan Thompson, our new City Controller, and to Lisa Volp, our new Assessor. So congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to both of you.
Thank you.
And Tony, if I could just, um, read them their oath of office?
Sure, go ahead.
Over here. Okay, you can both, uh, raise your right hands for me and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
For the City of Jamestown, Chautauqua County.
For the City of Jamestown, Chautauqua County.
New York.
New York.
New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Joe, you can, Roscoe now, you're out.
Hi, Joe.
Very good.
He's muted.
He's muted. All right, welcome, welcome aboard to, uh, Ryan and Lisa.
Thank you.
Uh, we will have, uh, the clerk read the communications from the public.
Okay. And dear council members, we know when anything new is introduced into the city, it can take some time to work out the new rules and regulations. However, in light of the decision to separate food trucks and mobile food vendors from the outdoor dining ordinance, at the special meeting of the City Council held on Monday, June 16th, we were hoping you would take some time to consider how beneficial a food truck ordinance can be for Jamestown. Food trucks are in demand. People want quality food that's also convenient. The food truck market has quadrupled in the past five years, and there are expected projections that it will bring in nearly $3 billion in 2017. Our city can reap the benefits of this booming new economy. Food trucks are as safe as restaurants and can actually be safer. In cities where the safety standards for food trucks are the same as restaurants, food trucks tended to outperform restaurants in safety inspections. It makes sense. We have one small kitchen we take with us everywhere we go. Food trucks are a financially accessible way for local entrepreneurs to start food businesses. Starting a restaurant business is expensive. A food truck can be a way for young people and those who want to avoid taking out large loans to harness their entrepreneurial spirit and participate in our local economy. We have to see mobile food establishments as business incubators and opportunity for our residents to own and operate their own businesses. This is an opportunity for the little guy to thrive, and as they build their business, they can expand into a brick and mortar. Food trucks can help bring a wide range of food options to areas that may lack access to food variety or healthy foods. Whether arriving in a downtown business district or a neighborhood in which fast food is the only option, food trucks have the ability to close these gaps. Food trucks can help other local business. It's not uncommon for food trucks to team up with other local businesses. Food trucks have partnered with local bakeries to have freshly baked bread and pastries. They have developed relationships with breweries to provide food outside of tasting rooms. Food trucks bring people out into the streets they might not normally spend time in, and once people are out, they tend to step into other local businesses. Successful local food trucks mean more money injected back into the local economy. It's no secret that when folks have more money, they spend more money. By not inhibiting food trucks, you are helping to reinforce our city's economic foundation. We hope you will keep these points in mind as you make decisions regarding food trucks in the future. And, um, this was sent in by five different individuals, Bill Winchester, Autumn Swanson, Paige Olson, Jeanette Caprino, and Jenna Arnohn. Okay, I completely support the movement to allow food trucks in downtown Jamestown, and furthermore, would encourage our city's leaders to designate and develop a lot where several trucks can set up on the perimeter with outdoor seating in the middle. Every developed and developing city that I've been to directly benefits from having food trucks as an active part of their culinary scene. It's not only an artistic expression, it draws people in to experience the city life and adds to the ambiance of a thriving community. Jamestown is economically depressed, and food trucks are a fantastic and cost-effective opportunity for aspiring chefs to pursue their passion through a legitimate business. I can't support this enough. Thank you for all you do to make Jamestown a happier place to live and play. Respectfully, Mickey Gertz, Festival Director, Whirlybird Music and Arts Festival.
Are there any other ones for food, for food trucks?
Um.
I think there's one more, right?
There, there's actually, the one from Mr. Gertz came in late, later today, uh, but I have a few more regarding food trucks. Uh, dear Jamestown City Council members, my husband and I have great faith in the redevelopment of downtown Jamestown. We've proven our commitment by investing our personal savings in opening a new retail business, Dot's Gift Boutique, in 2019, and purchasing an existing business, Webber Nap Company, in 2011. We have been watching the debate regarding permits for food trucks within the downtown area with great interest. It is hard for us to understand the debate and hesitancy in permitting opportunities for these new businesses. Certainly, Jamestown cannot afford to turn down enterprising community members, new or existing, who are trying to support both themselves in the Jamestown area with new businesses, jobs, and taxes. Every opportunity should be made to expand and enhance the downtown experience. Jamestown has made great strides, and we must continue to build on the foundation of tourism that has blossomed with the evolution of the Ice Arena, National Comedy Center, Lucy Museum, the Reg and Chautauqua Institution that has put Jamestown on the national map. We have great established restaurants that are supported by locals and tourists alike. What we lack is the capacity to handle the increased tourism trade in the realm of food and beverage. It would be very short-sighted to continue to confine food service options to sit-down-only lunch and/or dinner for out-of-town visitors. We fully support our area businesses, but one most load of tourists can overwhelm many of these established places. Most restaurants are restricted simply by their physical size. Another aspect is the amount of time visitors may be in the area, and a sit-down restaurant meal is not always a viable option. Competition-wise, these are two very different types of food service distributions, and both should be allowed to enhance our city. By allowing several forms of dining, you are helping meet the needs of the downtown community. There is both a growing demand from local residents and an expectation of visitors for this type of dining experience. My husband and I have traveled extensively in the U.S. and abroad and have enjoyed eating at this type of establishment. It's hard to think of an area we've traveled to that doesn't offer some form of food trucks. Food trucks are fun, convenient, affordable, both to the operators and customers, and can offer a variety of foods not always found in our area. And they can also be a great opportunity for existing brick-and-mortar businesses to expand their service, especially during special events. With a bit of compromise, there should be no problem finding suitable places to park the trucks that would not encroach upon existing restaurants. Perhaps along Third Street between Main and Pine, a few of the parking spots could be converted to truck spots for designated hours and days. The success of food trucks during our downtown festivals has proven there is a sustainable market. My family and I feel our business will only be helped by approving the use of food trucks downtown. Anything that attracts more people to come downtown to shop slash spend local should be welcomed and encouraged. I hope you will keep these thoughts in mind as you make your decision regarding this issue. Thank you. Sincerely, Mickey and Rex McCray. And this was addressed, um, this letter was forwarded to me. It was addressed, um, to Tony. Dear Tony, I am writing to express my strong support for Diana Scott's petition to operate a food truck serving barbecue in downtown Jamestown. Food trucks have been proven to be a viable dining option in many progressive communities across the United States. Diana has been operating her catering business out of a downtown Jamestown location for several years. She is an active member of the downtown Jamestown business community, and I applaud her efforts to diversify her business in the face of these uncertain times. As a longstanding downtown Jamestown restaurateur, I believe in the mantra of the more the merrier when it comes to bringing a critical mass of diners to our downtown. Unfortunately, this pandemic may force some local food service providers to keep their doors closed even after the green light is given by the government to move forward. With the continued threat of COVID-19 and its debilitating effect on the food service industry, we need more, not less, dining options in downtown Jamestown. As such, I wish Diana the greatest success in this latest venture and hope that the Jamestown City Council members will approve her petition to operate this new downtown business. Sincerely, Patty Sentai Landmark Restaurant.
That could let, that's the last of the food trucks.
I have a very brief, um, email for the, for the food trucks. Um, it came from Jeanette Caprino, who also signed the form letter. But she just writes that Diana al- already has an existing food business downtown. I see no reason why she shouldn't be granted permission to expand her business, especially in these trying times. Okay, that's the end of the, the food truck.
Yeah. I don't know if there's anyone, uh, that has been working on the committee that would like to, uh, respond to any of these. Uh, I did respond to Patty Sentai basically saying that we have a committee that's, um, actively meeting and working on trying to come to, uh, some sort of resolution, and probably within the next couple of weeks, we will have a resolution that will deal with food trucks, and, uh, we're working through that now. So I don't know if there's anybody on the committee that has anything else they want to add to that. If not, you know, I just want to make sure that people know that it's not, it's not a dead issue. We're, we're balancing all the different, uh, uh, options here, and we'll have some, uh, solution to this coming soon.
Yes, Tony, I would concur with that. Also, um, we've directed the Department of Development to work with, um, Mrs. Scott to try to get her, um, food truck permitted under the current law. We, that, that they can be current, they can be permitted. There may have to be, uh, a variance though because of the size of a food truck, but we, um, certainly want her to be able to get up and running as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? If not, keep.
Okay. Okay, the next email comes from, um, Tom and Delora. Here is my question for the next meeting. I would like to, to make a proposal on how the City Council communicates with the public. I propose that each member of the council be required to have an active Facebook group so that members of their ward and anyone in the city can ask, can ask direct questions. I proposed this on my Jamestown page and was told that it was impossible because many of the council members did not have the time to do this, and others did not have enough internet knowledge to make a page. Both of these reasons are unacceptable. It's 2020. If you do not know how to make a Facebook page, ask for help. It takes five minutes to create one. I know you have your email and phone numbers listed. My experience with calling and emailing is I did not receive a timely response. There are also community topics that would be beneficial to be addressed as a group. I understand there is an official page on the city website. No one reads this page. It's not the same as a Facebook group that targets each ward. There needs to be more communication with your constituents. This costs nothing, and almost everyone is on Facebook. Will you each commit to creating and participating in a Facebook page? This question was submitted days ahead of this meeting, so you have all had time to think about a response. You should be ready to give a yes or no answer. Thank you, Tom and Delora, Jamestown homeowner and city taxpayer.
Thank you.
This came from the Jamestown Justice Coalition. This is their mission statement. Achieving recognition, equity, and equality for all citizens in our community regardless of race, ethnicity, religious affiliation, gender, or sexual orientation through education, empowerment, and advocacy with a focus on local civic responsibility and engagement. Members of City Council, since the inception of the Jamestown Justice Coalition, our leadership team has been able to identify several major community concerns and has plugged in our members, over 1,000 citizens of Jamestown, New York, to develop task forces to advocate for change. Our weekly hashtag Justice June rallies at Dow Park have provided us the opportunity to educate residents on how to navigate and engage in local civics through voter registration and identification of local ward and council representation. Through valued community partnership with local organizations such as the United Way, the Community Foundation, the Ucan City Mission, the YWCA, and the Mental Health Association, we hope to mobilize residents to promote and advance economic and social justice for all by advocating for inclusion, for a seat at the table, to reimagining some of our current community programs, and to take a second look at how we allocate local funds. We have been fortunate enough to establish a dialogue already with all of these great programs our city has to offer, and we look forward to fostering a relationship for years to come. The Jamestown Justice Coalition has also had the opportunity to have an ongoing relationship with the Jamestown Police Department's Union Representative, Tim Jackson, and also Captain Todd Isaacson, as well as several officers on the force. Several solutions have been discussed to build better relationships with our community. We have also engaged in the first of many community conversations with our Sheriff Jim Quatron, who proactively arranged for a meeting with several county community leaders, new recruits in the police academy, the Dunkirk Chief of Police, and our soon-to-retire Jamestown Chief of Police, Harry Snellings. As a coalition, we would like to address one of the most crucial issues in our city at this moment, the hiring of a new police chief for the Jamestown Police Department. This would be a crucial appointment at any time, but in this unprecedented time of civil unrest, the publicized scrutiny of police departments, and the exposure of systemic racism in our, in our nation, this will be a generational-defining moment for our city that starts with this appointment. Therefore, we are requesting that City Council makes public outreach and transparency of this hiring process a priority. First of all, the public should be made aware of all of the candidates currently being considered for the position, whether they be internal or external candidates. Second, the public should be made aware of any communication with the leadership and members of the Jamestown Police Union. Current membership of this union should be a vital part of this conversation in order to shape and mold the culture of the department for years to come. Lastly, we implore you to reach out to community organizations such as, but not limited to, the Jamestown Justice Coalition, and also to the Black and Brown community in order to gauge the public's interest and recommendations for the requirements of this position. Your community is currently calling out for you to be agents of change and truly represents your, represent your constituents. We implore you now to answer the call. The Jamestown Justice Coalition.
Yeah.
Members of City Council, this letter to be read aloud at the Jamestown City Council meeting on June 29, 2020. The Jamestown Justice Coalition met with the Mental Health Association on June 25th, 2020 to speak with them on how we can support each other. It was a productive meeting with many eye-opening conversations. One aspect that stuck out to our entire leadership team was the lack of communication and support from elected officials within our community. The Jamestown Justice Coalition would like to address the City Council today to highlight the Mental Health Association's accomplishments. The goal is to overview their services in order to open up a conversation on why there is not support from elected officials to this association that brings a much-needed service to our county. In 2019, the Mental Health Association, 11,959 sign-ins in their Jamestown Recovery Center. These people connected with coaches to reach deep recovery and wellness. 622 participants worked with, with recovery coaches. 6,321 coaching sessions were provided for people and families in recovery. 270 micro grants were given to help people in recovery overcome recovery barriers. 275 participants were connected to stable housing. 72 overdoses were responded to in the community and connected with Narcan. 138 participants were connected with the Esprit Work Program. 79 achieved full-time employment. Advocated to ease the process for access to MAT in Chautauqua. Accomplishments achieved by the Mental Health Association. Worked with OASAS through the MAT-PADOA grant to change regulations in New York State. The model first developed at the MHA in Chautauqua County was ultimately embraced by OASAS and promoted throughout New York State. The model allows community-based recovery organizations to partner with clinics to provide recovery services and advocacy for people in recovery. Advocated for the proper and just care, reducing stigma for vulnerable persons in recovery throughout Chautauqua County. Helping people to connect with a recovery process that is the foundation of a productive and full life in our community. The Jamestown Justice Coalition comes to the Jamestown City Council today and asks why we aren't helping fund an association that has demonstrated itself not only to be highly successful in our county, but to be a growing necessity. The increasing number of overdoses in Chautauqua County speaks volumes to the need for these services. In addition to funding, the Mental Health Association and the Jamestown Justice Coalition collectively strongly suggest that the council finds creative ways that law enforcement can serve the mental health community. The leaders of the Mental Health Association mentioned little to no contact from representatives of local government in Chautauqua County. The Mental Health Association is located at 31 Water Street, number 7, Jamestown, New York 14701. Phone number 716-661-9044. Respectfully, the Jamestown Justice Coalition. And that's the last one.
Thank you.
Uh, President Dolez, can I comment on that one in particular? Um, I just want to make a couple comments about mental health. The, the Mental Health Association did visit council various times in the past. Council was very receptive to them. I believe Rick Huber was the director at the time that he came, um, asking for help in funding and other things. Again, it's not the council's job to put funding to them. That has to come from the budget, which would be the mayor's budget. So if that's something that is driven by this coalition, that needs to come that direction. Um, and I will vouch for, just real quickly, I will vouch for many other, uh, council members who did have some communications and some support with the mental health. It's not that it's not there, it's just, I, I, I don't know how much more open they would like that, so I would rather hear that from the Mental Health Association directly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on any of those correspondence?
Um, yeah, President Dolez, I, I would like to make just a quick comment on Mr. Andalora's email, and just to say that, I, I, I agree with him that more communication is good. However, you know, I kind of pride myself on answering phone calls and emails on the same day I get them, and usually in person. And I think the rest of the council would, I, from what I know about them, they are doing the same thing. So, um, that's how, I guess, how I would respond to that, is I'm, I'm doing the best I can. My phone number, my email is there, and I do what I can to get there the same day to answer those calls.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on those? Just briefly too, I would, I would piggyback on Councilman Nelson's comments that, uh, you know, we have various types of communications between emails, text messaging. We have our own personal Facebook pages that people message us on. We have home phones, and again, just like Councilman Nelson, I probably make at least two to three house calls, street calls, drive-bys a week, and stopping and making personal contact with constituents at all hours of the day and night, every single day. And, uh, while I, I'm not opposed to having, uh, a Facebook page that includes the entire city and council as well that people can, 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 uh, attach to. Um, again, most of us have full-time jobs, many of which we don't have time, and we're not permitted to use our Facebook, uh, accounts during our regular work hours, and so it becomes very cumbersome and very difficult. So, again, anything we can do to increase, um, communication, but I, I think most of us are very receptive. I know I, uh, I, I answer all my phone calls and I, I emails and messages and, um, you know, I do the best I can to get back to people in the time that I have, so, thank you.
Um, I just wanted to ask the question regarding, um, Nicole's letter, and this might be a legal question, but, um, the level of transparency I can appreciate. I don't know from a privacy perspective, making sure that everybody knows who everyone, that everyone is being, everyone who is being considered. I'm not quite sure. I've never been through that process before. And so, um, give a long list of everyone being considered. I, I hesitate to make that 100, I, I just, for the people who are being considered, that may, that may cause a problem. I just, I'm just, I'm, I'm just looking for some guidance on that. I don't want people to feel as though they're going to be singled out for putting their name on the list. I, I just, I don't know. So that's just where I am right now. I understand the need for transparency, and we, um, you know, the mayor and the Public Safety Committee and the council have to talk about how we're going to go through this process, but, um, I've never been on anything regarding, um, like when I worked, uh, for Jamestown Public Schools and we went with superintendents, we never had access to everyone's information, I bet. Uh, it's a slippery slope, but that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Any other?
Question.
Any other questions or comments?
Any other questions or comments? I will also piggyback on that, that it's a fine line between, you know, many of these people who may be applying for a job, you know, they already have positions in other communities, and you know, there's a certain balance between confidentiality and openness and transparency, where everybody knows everything about everybody. And so, again, you know, we're willing to work with, I know the mayor talked about putting a committee together, including members of the community, and so this will be an open process, but to a certain degree, there are certain things that are confidential within people's resumes and within people's personal lives.
President Dulce, I could just add on to what you're talking about, the committees, and that the committees will look like, will look like a community. So it's just not going to be one set group on the committee, so it's my understanding that there'll be people of color, people of different ethnicities, police, fire, city council, so it'll be a well-rounded group. And to know that, it's going to take some time, too, because we just don't want to throw anybody just in their office. So there is a level of transparency that the committee will look like the community.
Thank you. All right. Anything else on that? If not, we'll move on to the reports from our standing committees. We'll start with Finance, and Councilwoman Caruba will be reading the first ones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing amendment of the regular audit.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? If not, clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon? James? Caruba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution suspending the hiring freeze and authorizing the filling of one full-time laborer in the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Conservation. And noted this is retirement-funded in the 2020 general fund budget.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the city comptroller to amend the 2020 general fund budget to recognize Phase 1 of the COVID-19 Financial Restructuring Plan as approved by the City Council on June 8, 2020.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution establishing the standard workday for elected officials.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Municipal Insurance Consultants, Incorporated, 1780 Worley Drive, Williamsville, New York, 14221, as insurance advisor for property and casualty insurance for the time period April 15, 2020, through April 14, 2021.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon? James? Thank you. Councilwoman Caruba?
Aye.
Councilman Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the Jamestown Renaissance Corporation for the rental of 668 square feet of office space in the municipal building as follows: July 1, 2020, through December 31, 2020, at $200 per month; and January 1, 2021, through June 30, 2021, at $400 per month. And it's to be noted, this will allow the Jamestown Renaissance Corporation to be in closer proximity to the Department of Development as they work on many projects together. So this may enhance their communication as well.
Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon? James? Caruba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Dulce?
Aye.
We'll move on to Councilwoman Eklund for the remaining resolutions from Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number two to the 2019 Sidewalk Ramps Phase 1 contract with R. Patti Concrete Excavating LLC, PO Box 3081, Jamestown, New York, 14702, for a total increase of $11,807.75.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon? James?
Caruba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Husky Enterprises, 12 Brook Street, Lakewood, New York, 14750, for concrete work 2020 Newton Avenue, from Cary Place to Sturgis Street, for a total bid amount of $19,893. And also note that this project will be funded by the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG funds.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Husky Enterprises, 12 Brook Street, Lakewood, New York, 14750, for 2020 concrete repairs, Main Street, 11th Street to Kingsbury Street, for a total bid amount of $13,580. Also to note that this project will be funded by Community Development Block Grant, CDBG funds.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with R. Patti Concrete Excavating LLC, PO Box 3081, Jamestown, New York, 14701, for ADA sidewalk ramps for a total amount of $190,905.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Grindline Skate Parks, Incorporated, 4619 14th Avenue Southwest, Seattle, Washington, 98106, for Design Build Riverwalk Skate Park project for a total bid amount of $500,000, including funds from the Tony Hawk Foundation and the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I'd just like to say that I'm just really excited about this project, and to see that the Tony Hawk Foundation and Ralph C. Foundation is fulfilling one of the things that skaters want. And I'm just excited to see this project come to fruition and happen.
Mr. President, I'd also like to comment on that as well, that I think it's exciting to have this project. It will be a nice addition to the McCray Point areas. It will be right across the street. And also to let people know that they will be partnering with a local company dealing with some of the issues around the park that people may question why a Seattle company is bidding on this, but there are not that many within the New York State area, and they will be using local construction companies to do some of the work. So to let people know, we did consider that and found this to be the most appropriate for this development.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. President, I just want to echo my colleague's sentiment as well, that I'm excited about this project, and it's very important in our community that the young kids around here have more things to do, and I think that the skate park is going to to allow that, so I'm excited with that project as well.
Thank you. Anything else for that? If not, clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last from Finance, I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with IPL Corp. for the illumination of the Washington and South Main Street bridges in an amount not to exceed $428,500.00. This project will be funded with DRI funds. And I just want to add that I'm very excited to see this happen. The Riverwalk area has been very important to me and many other people in this community, and it's finally nice to see this come to fruition, and will be a great addition to the Riverwalk.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And Dulce?
Aye. That concludes our resolutions from Finance. We'll now move on to Public Safety, and Councilman Sheldon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution reappointing David E. Wilfong and Teresa A. Jackson to the Office of Commissioner of Deeds for a period of two years.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And Dulce?
Aye.
We'll now move on to the Public Works Committee and Councilman Nelson for the next two resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Robert and Paula Hofgren, 80 Flavanna Avenue, Jamestown, New York, for a permanent utility easement for parcels and 370.10-3-38, to be used by the Department of Public Works for the construction of a stormwater detention project.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon? Councilwoman James?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And Dulce?
Aye.
Mr. President, I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to convey parcel 370 10-3-26 to Robert and Paula Hofgren in exchange for a permanent utility easement for parcels 370 10-3-25 and 370.10-3-38.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Dulce?
Aye.
We'll now move on to Councilman Olson for the next two resolutions.
Thank you, President Dulce. I have a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works to purchase construction materials and services at the prices quoted to the County of Chautauqua as set forth in the Chautauqua County 2020 Construction Season Purchasing Guide.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
And Russell?
Aye.
And Dulce?
Aye.
I also have a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works to change the current street load zone at Patient's Pharmacy Retail, three twenty Main Street, Jamestown, New York, one four seven zero one, to a handicap parking space.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And Dulce?
Aye. We'll now move on to Councilwoman James for the final resolution in Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works to install two blind person area signs on George Avenue, Jamestown, New York.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And Dulce?
Aye. That concludes our resolutions from our standing committees under old business. We'll now move on. Is there any reports from special committees? If not, any reports from city officers?
President Dulce, I'm not sure if this is the correct time to do this, but I was just wanted to happily report that the Planning Commission did approve the Gateway Lofts project. And it's been a long time and a lot of work has gone into it. And I just wanted to commend the work of the commission, especially Greg Rab and, of course, Crystal and her staff. And Councilwoman Caruba and James were also involved in that. And it turned out to be a really great thing. So I just wanted to point that out. And I don't know if Crystal wanted to add anything there, but I appreciate all the work that she had done on the project.
Thank you. Anything else? Does Crystal want to say anything? Or I know there's going to be more to follow.
It was a long process, but a lot of people came together and worked really hard to turn it into a really great project. So we're happy to.
Thank you. Any other reports from city officers? If not, report from council members on administrative boards. Is there any business to come before the council? We do have one item under new business. And that will be read by Councilwoman Eklund.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a personnel agreement with the Civil Service Employees, CSCE, Local one thousand AFL-CIO, for the period covering January one, two thousand and nineteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And Dulce?
Aye. Just for a point of note, that the resolution number twenty has been pulled for this evening. So that's all the resolutions that we have under new business.